Well, good evening, everyone. This is Senator James Langford calling from my office in Washington, DC. Glad everyone is joining the call. I'm gonna say thank you and we'll spend a little bit of time talking through a few things. This is a live telephone town hall meeting and this is an opportunity for people to be able to listen. Let me tell you how this works. This is kinda like if you've ever listened to a radio talk show at any point, how it works. You can listen on the call. Right now, there are thousands of the people across the state that are joining in on the call. They got the call just like you did. You're able to participate. Your microphone is muted right now. So whatever you say, whatever's going on in your home, no one else can hear right now. The only way that you can participate where you can engage and people can hear you is if you press star three. So if you wanna ask a question, you press the asterisk button on the bottom left of your phone and then the number three, star three, and that will transfer you and will put you in line to be able to ask a question. You will still be on mute the whole time during that time period as well. I'll be able to call your name. We'll get your name when you just share it with whoever answers the phone there with ya. You share your name, then we'll just start taking as many calls as we can possibly take through the course of the next hour on this phone call. You can listen in as long as you would like to or obviously at any point if you wanna be able to drop out, you're welcome to be able to do that as well. But you'll stay muted the entire time unless you press star three and get in line to be able to ask a question and everyone is welcome to do that and we'll go through as many questions as we possibly can. As always, there's a lot of ways to be able to get to me. We do a lot of telephone town halls. We do a lot of face-to-face conversations. I'm in Washington, DC. The first fifteen weeks of this year, fourteen of the fifteen weeks, I'm in DC. And so we're trying to get a chance to engage with as many people as many ways as possible. If you'd like to be able to get a message to me, you're always welcome to be able to call my office. The phone numbers are all at langford.senate.gov. Langford.senate.gov. And I'll give you the phone number for the Washington, DC number if you wanna be able to call that. It's 202-224-5754. You're always welcome to be able to call that. Every day, we go through those phone calls. Whoever calls into my office, we make up a full list of that and so I can read those comments and make sure that I hear that. A lot of people also email us at langford.senate.gov and that comes to us as well. We get about sixty-five thousand or so emails in in a year, just depending on the year. And so we have a lot of correspondence that way and glad to be able to engage with as many people as possible. So the Senate has been in session for seven weeks so far this year. So there's a lot that's happening. Obviously, the presidential inauguration, the swearing-in of the new Senate that happened, there's been a lot of organizational meetings that have happened and then it worked through the cabinet officials. That has been the dominant portion of what happens. That is typical for a new president. When they're coming in, there are a lot of new individuals to go through the nomination process. The Senate has to confirm a little over twelve hundred people total that are presidential nominees. So there's a lot of process to go through. The vast majority of those initially will be cabinet officials. Once cabinet officials will be in place, they will start doing the recommendations for their staff. Many of these agencies will have anywhere between fifteen to a hundred different individuals that will also have to go through the confirmation process. But the first things first is the cabinet officials and then they start working through the rest of the staff after that. That's the major part of what'll happen at the beginning of this year and we'll have a lot of engagement. If you have any questions about that, you're welcome to be able to ask it. But as we go through this evening, you're really welcome to be able to engage in any question that you'd like to go through. So again, if you wanna ask a question, we'll go to star three and then we'll get you in the queue to be able to ask a question. And then I'll just quickly answer as many as we can and we'll see how many questions that we can get through tonight as we go through this time. So thanks again for joining us. I know some folks are still being added into the call right now. This is a live telephone town hall, talking from Washington, DC. And we're talking to people from all over the state of Oklahoma and glad to be a part of this visit. So we'll start trying to get to our first call as quickly as possible, soon as we get people all plugged in and we'll go to our first call. Our first call, I think, is Virginia. Is that right?
Yes.
Hey, Virginia, how are ya?
Oh, I'm good, Congressman. How are you?
I am doing just fine. Can I ask where did we call you? What town are you in right now?
I'm in Oklahoma City.
Okay, great. Glad to be able to chat with you. What can I do for ya?
Thank you. I wanna know if you can tell me, in light of our new Education Secretary, Betsy DeVos' seeming to support charter and voucher schools, I wanna know what your plan is to ensure our public education system of your support? And if you do have a plan to do that, can you elaborate a little bit on that?
Sure, yeah. Go ahead.
Okay. I'm curious to know whether or not you support or what your feelings are about voucher and charter schools. Thank you.
Okay. Oh, sure. That's a great question. Thanks, Virginia. All right, let me try to run through that and try to answer as many of the issues you brought there as well. Nine out of ten students in the country are in public schools. So by far, the vast majority of students around the country are in public schools. And Betsy DeVos, during her hearing under sworn testimony, made the statement that she will be a strong advocate for great public schools and was very specific on that. And I heard a lot of the comments because she has been engaged for the last thirty years in trying to help kids in inner cities, in rural areas, and in areas where there's poverty, to try to have other options for other schools that have not been successful. Not every public school is successful. There's a lot of issues and a lot of reasons why for that. Most schools by far are. And so she has been very engaged as an advocate, both giving and then organizing to be involved in that. So she's a non-traditional selection in many ways because she doesn't have a background in public schools. She has a background, a lot of other options other than that. But it was her very clear statement that she will be an advocate for public schools. The last thing we would want is a Secretary of Education that diminishes teachers or diminishes public schools when by far that's the vast majority. My own perspective and my own background on this is pretty easy to outline. My degree was in secondary education. My mom is a lifelong educator. My brother is an educator. All of them in public education and been very engaged in that. I grew up in public schools. My children grew up in public schools. So I'm a beneficiary of what happened. If for my own teachers, my children have been that as well. So that's just been a part of me and who I am and that's the vast majority of Oklahomans that I interact with. Saying all that, the best way to be able to know where I stand on the public school issues is a bill that we actually did in 2015 at the end of the year. You may be familiar with the bill, No Child Left Behind. It was the law of the land. It was created under the Bush administration. President Bush put together a proposal, basically what he did as governor of Texas and then wanted to be able to pass that on to the whole country. Well, that might've worked well for Texas. It was not a good plan to be able to push the whole country because it made Washington, DC in charge of education. Teacher evaluation was done by DC Standards. Curriculum was coordinated by DC Standards. The direction schools would go by DC Standards. Eventually, that just started collapsing on itself because basically the whole country is working for Washington, DC in education. So in the fall of 2015, we had a very bipartisan bill called Every Student Succeeds. In fact, eighty-five senators voted for it to be able to pass it. President Obama signed it and it replaced No Child Left Behind. And what it did was it pushed out education policy out of Washington, DC, back to the states, back to local districts where I believe it should be. You wanna have education decisions as close to that child as possible so the parent can be more involved, the teacher, the administrator of those local districts can be involved. That's the best way to do it. My questions to Betsy DeVos circled around that. Is that her focus? Her priority is not to try to be the Education Secretary for every school district as if every teacher works for her, but to be one who facilitates and coordinates, answers questions and works as an Education Secretary, but education policy happens in our state. So if you wanna know what needs to happen in our state, I just pushed it back to our state legislature. They're meeting right now and they need to be able to take the lead on education policy. That's where education policy should be. So let me keep going. Virginia, it's a great question. Let me keep going to the next person. This person, I think, is named James. Is that right?
Yes.
James, great name, by the way. Appreciate it. Where did we call you? What town are you in?
I'm in Oklahoma City as well.
Oh, great. Two calls in a row from Oklahoma City. What can I do for you, James?
Well, you know, this is a, I mean, it's a huge thing right now. Obviously, it just dominated the news with President's press conference today. I was just wondering, like, what you have to say, like, in general, you know, as a GOP senator, very conservative, you know, I know you play it down the party line and everything like that, but with everything that's come out with the President and Cabinet about Russia and their ties, like, what, like, what will you do if this continues to build up, if this continues to come out, all these, like, with all of these being, you know, all of this being revealed and the leaks continue if they do, you know, will you, you know, stand by the President, stand by the party, or will you stand by what's right?
Okay, let me ask you a quick question just before. This is gonna be kind of a weird question and you should be odd if I ask you this. Can I ask how old are you? And you don't have to tell me exactly. I'm not gonna ask for your bank ID or anything else. I'm not gonna get weird about it. I just need to get a perspective.
That's right. I'm twenty-three.
Okay, perfect. The reason I wanna ask you that is because I wanna be able to give you a long-term perspective on that. Okay, James, let me walk through this a little bit with ya. I serve on the Intelligence Committee. I serve also on Homeland Security Committee. I would tell you, Russia is no ally and no friend of the United States and I've been very clear to speak on it often. They don't share our values on human rights. They don't share our value about free press, about free speech, about freedom of religion, about direct access to courts. They are not a good example and they're not a close friend. As President Reagan used to say, "Have them trust and verify." I would say of current Russia, "Don't trust and verify." Putin is a former KGB agent and leader and he has not changed in who he is. Their engagement in our election last time, I don't think affected the outcome of the election, but their engagement in the election last time is no question for me. They've been engaged in elections all around the world. In fact, if you read some of the papers today, it had stories about Russia and their engagement and trying to affect elections in Europe right now. That has been their mode. They have illegitimate elections and part of Russia's deal for decades has been because their elections are not real, they try to go mess with every other election and to try to delegitimize them as well and basically say, "No one's any different than we are" on it, when we are vastly different than who they are. But saying all that, for the President to reach out and try to establish a relationship because there will be areas that we will find cooperation, like we do with China, like we do with other countries, we should try to engage rather than disengage on it. I asked you about your age on it, James, because at the very beginning of the Obama administration, President Obama traveled around the Muslim world and encouraged engagement with Iran. And during the campaign even, he talked about direct contact to the leaders of Iran and the whole country freaked out because we don't talk directly to Iran, haven't had diplomatic relations with Iran. That is a terrorist thug nation. That is the largest state sponsor of terrorists in the world. But he made it his eight-year project to try to re-engage Iran into what he called the community of nations and to try to re-engage them. A lot of people were very concerned about that at the beginning of the Obama administration. A lot of people are very concerned about it at the beginning of the Trump administration. One of the most famous moments in Richard Nixon's presidency is when he traveled to China as being a huge opponent to communism to try to engage in China and to try to engage in leadership there. So while there is some benefit to try to engage with another country that we don't trust, that is a power, not near the power that we are, but is a significant military power in the world, it is good to do that. I am very skeptical of them and I have no question that they tried to engage in our election. Serving on the Intelligence Committee, we're in the process of doing a pretty active investigation on how deep they went and what they did in the process. But I'm no fan of Russia and very skeptical, but the President gets to choose foreign policy and we'll see what he does. I hope that makes sense, James. I'm trying to run through as many calls as I can and I apologize. That was a little longer answer than it might've, should've been, but I wanted to be able to touch on as well. For Clayton. Clayton, are you on the phone right now?
Yes, sir. I'm here.
Hey, Clayton. Where did we call you tonight?
Uh, sorry, I'm in Edmond.
You're in Edmond, okay.
Yes, sir.
What can I do for you, sir?
Well, first of all, thank you for your strong words on Russia. I really, I appreciate that. I would hope that more in your party would be speaking out as you have been and I look forward to your work on the Intelligence Committee and I appreciate you speaking out that way. I hope the President will listen to what you have to say.
You know what? I hope so too. There's a lot of us that are pushing back, saying, "Go," but go very carefully.
Yes, sir. Absolutely. Absolutely. And thanks again for doing this. Thank you for the opportunity to visit with you and share my thoughts. I just wanted to talk a little bit about the Affordable Care Act and talk about my personal story. Everybody gets so caught up in the politics and each side reverts to their corners and speaks with their talking points.
Right.
And I don't care about talking points. I don't care about politics. I have an eight-year-old daughter who was diagnosed at the age of three with type one diabetes. My beautiful wife was diagnosed last year with breast cancer. So half of my family has a pre-existing condition that they will have for the rest of their lives. We understand the protections of the Affordable Care Act better than a lot of families. I look at not just access to pre-existing conditions, but not being charged more because my child has a pre-existing condition, not being kicked off of our insurance because my wife had the unfortunate circumstance of being diagnosed. And so all these protections, and again, not just access to coverage, but not being gouged, not being charged more, not being kicked off, not being subjected to lifetime caps, annual caps. My baby girl is eight. It costs a lot to treat diabetes. She would hit those lifetime caps quickly. We spent, we were billed four hundred thousand dollars last year for my wife's cancer treatment. Those caps come quickly and frighteningly. And so what can you say to reassure me tonight that you and your Republican colleagues, in your plans, and it's not just enough to, like President Trump says, "Get lip service" and say, "We're gonna cover pre-existing" because that's hard. It's a complicated thing and I know your jobs are difficult. And it's not enough to just say, "Oh, we're gonna cover all this and you're gonna have all this" because it's not that easy because somebody has to pay for that and it's not a simple thing. So can you offer any reassurances to me because that's what's keeping me up at night right now as a foster and a provider?
Yeah. And I can absolutely understand that. I would tell you that I've heard from a lot of people and people from my party, and I'm not gonna ask you, it doesn't matter what part of your party, but I've heard from a lot of people from my party saying, "Hurry up. You need to go ahead and repeal and replace Obamacare, get it done."
Right.
I've tried to say to people within my own party, "It's not that simple. This is not a simple process because there are people exactly like you that are in the process that we need to make sure that don't fall through the cracks on this." So you can do a flippant vote and be able to turn things on and off, but that's real people's lives that are in the middle of this.
Right.
So let me run through several things on it. We will go through the repeal and replace process and it will take over several years in all likelihood. The bulk of it will start in about the next six months, but the effects of that will not really start for probably two or three years because there'll be a slow wind down. As you know, or you may or may not know, most insurance takes about eighteen months from the time that they get the requirements to when they can actually sell that policy and make the transition. If you remember when the Affordable Care Act first started, it was a three-year phase in because it took that long to get all the regulations out and to be able to get everything posted and so insurance could start in the process. What we've experienced currently is this odd shift that's happened in the state where those that were in poverty that didn't have access to insurance before now have access to insurance. About a hundred thousand in our state that are on the individual healthcare plan. And then we've had this big shift that those folks that are, make about, let's say, thirty-five thousand or so, or twenty-five thousand, depending on whether they're single or how many members in their family and up, that are just outside of the subsidy caps, those individuals have dropped out of healthcare. They used to buy healthcare for six or seven thousand dollars a year. Now it's twenty thousand dollars a year for them and they've dropped out because they can't afford it. So literally, it is-
And to be clear, part of those numbers are because the governor chose not to expand Medicaid. And I know that's a whole other deal.
Uh, no, it's actually, that's-
It's just we-
No, it's actually a lot of states that have dealt with that, but in Oklahoma-
Right.
We've increased our, the rates in Oklahoma have gone up a hundred and eleven percent in the individual market in the last twenty-four months. So in the last two years, we've had a hundred and eleven percent increase. So let me talk you through a couple of things. There's a lot of word out there to say, "Okay, everything's getting shut down." That's not true. Guaranteed issue was in a meeting I was in earlier today on, working through guaranteed issue. You're right, it's a very complicated issue, but it has to be done. Lifetime caps is another one. That you are correct. That has to be done. We have to have a way to be able to help people transition from one policy to the next. We have to allow people to be able to maintain a policy, but we also have to be able to allow people to have greater variety. There are people that are forced to purchase a policy that covers a lot of things they don't wanna cover, which discourages, for instance, younger folks like James, the last caller was twenty-three, discourages that age bracket because their rates are the same as senior adults as well. And they can't get the same catastrophic policy, which for most of them is all they need, is a catastrophic policy and a health savings account in case there's an emergency. Those are very typical things. So we're working through all the process on that. There are, I've heard people say that Republicans don't have an idea on this. That's actually not true. We have a hundred. And so the issue is trying to get that hundred all combined together to where we are right now. Because every year, the Affordable Care Act changes healthcare and you have to be able to deal with the realities of right now on it. And so, yes, sir. Those are serious issues. Those are real conversations that happen around the hallway and I wanna assure you that those things are moving. Clayton, let me keep moving because I wanna be able to cover a lot of folks. Bless you and your family and working with your daughter and with your bride. Those are big days for y'all and so I pray God's blessing and continue to take care of all you. My stepfather was a diabetic and so I walk that through in my own personal life. Let me go to Sarah. To Sarah is the next person that's up. Sarah, are you there?
I am. I am. Thank you for taking my question.
Absolutely, Sarah. Where did we reach you? What town are you in?
I'm in Moore, Oklahoma.
Hey, we're reaching a lot of folks right now that are asking questions from the Oklahoma City metro area. What can I do for you, Sarah?
I'm wondering, what are the next concrete steps to take to investigate the ties between the Trump administration and Russia, especially the security issues around how he's handling data and the people who've been potentially breached by Russia? What are the next steps there?
Next steps are actually in the Intelligence Committee that I serve on in the Senate, in the Intelligence Committee of the House. The reason those two committees are those, I've heard folks say, "Let's do a select committee. Let's pull out some big public thing." President Obama, at the end of last year, said, "We're going to put sanctions. We're gonna put a report together on Russia, but the American people are not gonna be happy with the report because most of it is classified and will never be out there in the public setting." When he said that, I said, "I am so glad that he said that because this is whatever happens in the spring, people are gonna say this is a partisan issue one way or the other." But I would assure you that is a very bipartisan committee when we work through the intelligence. There's no cameras there. There's no partisanship, no showing off. This is a national security issue, which is not a partisan issue. And the reason intel in the House and the Senate can do it is, we all have the clearances, our staff have the clearances. If you created a select committee, it would take six months to get up to speed to what we've already started doing a month and a half ago. So we've already started through the process. We're already doing the research. We're going through documents. We're going through background information. Many of it's very, very sensitive, but we're asking a lot of questions. What happened? How did it happen? What was the engagement? As I mentioned before to the caller earlier, Russia has been very engaged in trying to interfere in elections for two decades. In fact, it's interesting, some people don't know, it's not classified anymore. It's long since been declassified. But on President Jimmy Carter's campaign, the Russians had planted someone on his campaign staff to be able to spy on and see if they couldn't interfere in that campaign and that was in the nineteen-seventies. So it's something the Russians have done for a long time. We've gotta be able to pull it out and expose it and we've gotta be able to confront the Russians and to say, "We're the United States of America and you don't do this to us. And we're no small little country somewhere that you can just bully around. We will not be bullied and we'll be able to push back." Now, I'm not talking about trying to provoke something, but I think it sends a clear message that when you're dealing with somebody like Russia, you don't deal with it in soft tones, you make it clear. But this will be a very thorough conversation. I would tell you, Republicans and Democrats are fully on board in this bipartisan committee and the intel committee and we'll stay very, very focused on it. So I appreciate the call and we keep going. There may be other questions and details on Russia and other things that are happening right now. But is it Sean? Sharon? Sharon. I think is the right name. My staff is trying to write down the name here and I couldn't read it right off. So is there Sharon there? I think maybe not. So Sharon, are you there?
Can you hear me?
Yeah, I can. Sure can.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am. Where did we reach you? What town are you in?
I live in Edmond.
In Edmond. We called all over the state and so far, all of our questions have been from the Oklahoma City metro area. So great to hear from you either way. What can I do for you?
President Trump, in his campaign, said he would promise that Social Security and Medicare would stay the way they were, that we worked for it. That was a promise long since made. And I wanna know if you would pledge to do the same?
Yeah, I've not heard a single thing from the administration talking about Social Security or from Medicare, either one.
Well, have them-
And I would tell you, let me finish for me as well. Social Security and Medicare, long-term, you look at twenty years on the horizon, will have to make some adjustments. No question. You go back to the nineteen-eighties, Tip O'Neill and Ronald Reagan looked at Social Security. They looked at thirty years on the horizon and they made some adjustments. We're now experiencing those. For instance, Social Security has moved from sixty-five to sixty-seven based on the agreement in the law that was passed in the late nineteen-eighties and that had a slow change on it to be able to stabilize Social Security. That stabilized it. We will have to look at way on the horizon. I'm forty-eight years old. From my generation, we're gonna have to look at, "How do we make sure Social Security is stable?" People are living longer, are having more productive lives, and quite frankly, healthcare at end of life is more expensive than it's ever been. So for the people that are in Medicare right now, or that are in Social Security, or that are even near it right now, there should be absolutely no changes. But for the generation behind them, we should start the process of making some adjustments so people can plan for it and to be able to say, "We financially cannot afford to be able to keep it the same way that it is with the cost increases and things that are happening in medicine and with the length of life that people experience right now." As you probably know, when Social Security first started, the year sixty-five was established because that was the average life expectancy for most individuals at that time. There was an expectation that if you exceeded your own personal savings for retirement, there would be kind of a safety net for you to make sure that you didn't end up on the street, to be able to provide that safety net if you exceeded your life expectancy. Well, thankfully, people live a lot longer than sixty-five now. And so that's still, we've gotta be able to adjust. But that shouldn't be those in it or near it. That should be the generation behind it. And I would tell you, in my generation, I don't meet anyone that expects that Social And I would tell you, in my generation, I don't meet anyone that expects that Social Security and Medicare will look exactly the same when we get there as it does right now, because the nation can't afford it. So, I hope that-
I have worked with many seniors that never planned to be poor when they are seniors, and telling them to work, use their savings is ridiculous. They don't have savings like rich people.
Right, no, I believe me, I- I understand that completely. It is the responsibility of every individual, obviously, to be fiscally responsible in their own life. But for those that have worked very hard and have not had a high income in their life, when they get to retirement, they have very little in their own retirement, that's why the Social Security safety net is there. And so, I completely understand that, and it should remain. But in the future generation, it will have to be addressed, and that's something that we should start talking about now, but actually not implement for another 20 years or so. So, let me keep moving, because we've got a lot of questions. I appreciate your question on that, Sharon. The next person up, I believe, is Karen. Karen, are you there?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am. Where do we reach you?
I'm from Tulsa.
Great. What can I do for you, ma'am?
I just wanna know how strong the Republican Congress is behind President Trump in seeking his, or promoting and moving on his agenda. He has a lot that he wanted to accomplish, and you just don't get a sense from the media how strong the GOP is behind him. And I'm particularly interested in income tax reform and regulations on small businesses, and the budget, and we don't hear that. So, I wanna know, are we moving on that, and is there a sense of urgency for that?
Great question, Karen. So, the main focus right now is about cabinet nominees. That's happening in the Senate, and that occupies a tremendous amount of time to be able to go through all the nominees, both for Supreme Court now, as we're dealing with Neil Gorsuch, and then through all these cabinet nominees. So, the Senate is in the personnel business right now, and we will be at least another month. The House, on the other hand, they don't do any of the nominations. So, the House has already started the process on the Affordable Care Repair and Replace. They're working through the process right now on tax reform, and to be able to finalize their proposal. They're working through a lot of different legislative pieces now, because they're not dealing with the personnel side. They've also started what's called the Congressional Review Act. These are some of the midnight regulations that were put in the last six months of the administration. When a new administration comes in, you reevaluate the regulations that were done at the very end of the previous administration, and Congress takes a vote on those. There's a time limit, it's not all of them, that goes all the way back to the beginning, it's only those done at the end. And it's a very specific law that was put in place. Interestingly enough, the law originates back to an Oklahoman as well, Don Nichols, along with a guy named Harry Reid, that you might have heard of. Harry Reid and Don Nichols wrote the Congressional Review Act years and years and years ago, and it allows a Congress to look at the previous president's last minute regulations affect those. So, we're going through some of that. As soon as the Senate gets through the personnel issues that we've got, and the Congressional Review Act, things that we're looking at, those midnight regulations, we will immediately move the legislation. But literally, for instance, we're in session all night tonight. This is a 24-hour day for us, working through nominees, as try to get them done. We had two different 24-hour days last week, that we literally worked around the clock. So, we're spending a lot of time, working through a lot of issues, there's a lot of debate on the floor, but literally, our calendar's completely full with the nominees, and then we're working in committees on the legislative process. So, it's all moving, and yes, there's an absolute commitment to tax reform, to answer that question as well. That's a very big part of what we're trying to work on. Karen, I appreciate your question. Let me move to Chris. Chris, are you on the phone?
Yes, I am.
Hey, Chris, where do we reach you?
Broken Arrow.
In Broken Arrow, terrific. What can I do for you?
I'm concerned about Scott Pruitt. And what I'm really concerned about is you glossing over Betsy DeVos and saying that what she had to say during her hearing was good and positive, and I'm sure Pruitt did the same thing. But I'm more worried about, how can a man who sued the agency as many times as he did, run it and run it in a way that will be beneficial to us? I'm also hearing about the Endangered Species List is being changed.
Hmm.
And you have a minute-
That is the first that I've heard that. I've not heard any changes on Endangered Species Act.
Yes, that was brought up yesterday somewhere. I think a Florida governor, a Florida representative, brought that to the floor, or is bringing that one up?
Well, that actually takes 218 votes in the House, and 60 votes in the Senate, and a presidential signature before anything were to move on Endangered Species Act. Let me try to take a couple of those for you, Chris. One is, I do agree, there are some changes that need to be made in the Endangered Species Act. And I don't know what the proposal was on it, so I'm not connecting it to that, 'cause I have no idea what a Florida congressman might have mentioned on it. The way that it is set up currently is that it is very difficult to get a species off, to be able to show that they're successful on it, and there's been very few successes the federal government has had getting them off. If you do a partnership between state governments, local tribes, and then the federal government to be able to work through in very specific criteria to be able to help them get off in a reasonable time period, we can help some of these species thrive, and that's really the goal, is to be able to help population to be able to increase on these different counts. So, that's something I do think needs to be readdressed in the law. It's several decades old, it just needs a reevaluation to be able to make sure we're not only protecting species, but we're actually getting a good count of how species roll off. As far as for Scott Pruitt, I understand there are some individuals, and that's been the number one issue that I've heard when I've talked to some colleagues here, that are not voting for Scott Pruitt. They've said, "He sued the EPA, how can he possibly lead the EPA?" Scott has made this statement, both in his hearing, it's something he and I have talked about, and it's something he's made a lot of public statements on. His suit against the EPA was not against the mission of the EPA, it was in the tactics and the way they were carrying things out. What he primarily sued the EPA on is Clean Air Act, Clean Water Act. The Clean Air Act and the Clean Water Act, both are laws from the 1970s. They require that the EPA works with the states and through the states to be able to actually carry it out as the first tier. And if the state doesn't do it, then the federal government jumps in on it. You may know, our Department of Environmental Quality in Oklahoma is a fantastic organization that is tenacious about implementing environmental quality issues in our state. It was one of the first DEQs that was birthed in the entire nation, got done here in Oklahoma in 1993. They're a leading organization, they're the primary function for environmental implementation in our state and the way our state is structured. What Scott Pruitt has done is, he sued the EPA when they were overreaching their bounds. Let me give you an example. Waters of the United States was an EPA rule that they put in place that expanded tremendously the authority of the EPA in what locations of land and developments and all building and all kinds of things that could be done around the entire country, things that have always been done by states, by all 50 states. There was an uproar literally in all 50 states. This went to court immediately, a lot of attorneys general, including ours, sued the EPA and said, "That is overreaching." A court took that case, immediately stayed that regulation from the EPA, and has it still on hold to say that that can't move, because that court said, "It's entirely likely this will be overturned, so we don't wanna implement it and then have it undone as well." That's the kind of stuff that Scott Pruitt was in. Did he win every case? No, he did not win every case. But the reason he was going to court was defending the rights of our state to make decisions, just like every other state has the right to do that through their own Department of Environmental Quality and their own implementation. And I would say, we have very good people in our DEQ as well that take that on. So, I appreciate your question. By the way, just as a heads up to everybody, the vote on Scott Pruitt is tomorrow in his confirmation vote, should be around noon or so, Central Time. So, somewhere through there should be his vote, and so you can get a chance to track it and to be able to see the details of this. So, I'm gonna move on to the next caller, but if you'd like to get in the queue and you'd like to ask a question, I'm gonna try to do as many as I possibly can. We'll be on the phone about another 20 minutes or so. If you wanna ask a question, press star three on your phone, that's the little asterisk on the bottom left of your phone, and the number three, and we'll put you in line to be able to ask a question as well. So, glad to be able to jump in on that. Let me go to the next caller, and I think it is Gary, if I'm seeing the list here right. Gary, are you there?
Yes, sir.
Hey, where do we reach you? What town are you in?
Tulsa, Oklahoma.
In Tulsa, terrific. What can we do for you?
It's a subject that I'm gonna get to. I called the FBI, I called the Department of Justice today, it couldn't get anywhere. There's so much bureaucracy, I couldn't believe.
So, here's the great line.
I tried to get ahold of the voice, you know, and, but I did get ahold of Senator Anhoff.
Good.
Got ahold of him, and, oh, didn't get ahold of him, but I got ahold of one of his aides. And she was, she agreed with me, that I believe, and I know, that during the lame duck period of President Obama, that he bugged the White House. And these calls are going right directly to the Washington Post and the New York Times. And it's obvious what's happened. I mean, he had all this time while he was there, and this is gonna get out. It was touched on tonight at Fox News, Business Fox News, and one of the, and one of the reporters said that the intelligence agency that do all these things was working for the president, and you know how Obama, and you know how that works. This is gonna come out, and it's gonna come out fairly soon. And that the President Obama bugged the White House, so that when President Trump's come in, he got a, he called Australia today. And he talked with Mexico. It all got back to the news media.
It did. Let me try to answer this in the way that I think would clarify it. I would say to you, I don't believe, and this is me personally, and again, serving on the Intelligence Committee, I know some of the processes that they go through here. The White House is a location that they do a lot of attention to make sure there's no listing devices, there's no bugs, there's no anything there, there's a consistent sweep to be able to check it, to be able to evaluate it. So, I don't believe, and again, Gary, I'm not diminishing it, I understand that you believe that, I don't believe that there's bugs in the White House on it. Second part of it, though, there's no question there are leaks coming out of the White House right now. I don't question that some of these are staff members that have been there for a while, maybe carried over from the previous administration, as they're trying to get their new staff come up. The phone calls that are to foreign leaders, I have been very clear here in Washington DC in the meetings that I have been in, that for any individual that feels like they're doing the country good by leaking out these conversations, is actually doing harm to the country, because the last thing that you want is any foreign leader calling our president, or our president calling them, and that foreign leader is constantly thinking, "I have to be careful in my words, because I don't, this is not a private conversation, it may be leaked out in the days ahead." You want frank conversations to be able to happen between foreign leaders, and it's also extremely important that classified documents stay classified, because when those documents are leaked out by any individual, whether they're well-meaning or not, it diminishes the ability to be able to gather intelligence on foreign individuals, because there is a tendency for no one to be able to cooperate, because they believe all the information will be leaked out in the days ahead by someone, again, well-meaning, but actually hurting us long-term in our national security. So, I would say, there are some leaks clearly in the White House, there's a lot of information coming out that should not come out, and those individuals, I hope the president does follow through, just like President Obama. There were a lot of leaks during his White House at one time period, they were very aggressive to deal with those leaks during that time period. I would hope President Trump would do the same, and to say, "Private conversations need to stay private, and that's the best way to be able to protect it." So, let me keep moving, Gary, thanks. Thanks for calling in. Let me move into Bill. Bill, are you there?
Yes, Senator Langford.
Hey, great to visit with you. Where do we reach you, sir?
Moore, Oklahoma.
In Moore, great. What can I do for you?
Yeah, well, first of all, thank you for all you do for the state, Senator.
Well, that's very kind of you, sir, thanks.
My question has to do with SCOTUS, Neil Gorsuch. I'm not sure why the Republicans don't push the nuclear option on this guy and go ahead and get the president set to precedent, set in the nuclear option, because even if Gorsuch gets through, the Democrats are going to put up their fight if President Trump is fortunate enough to appoint a second nominee. And I think we oughta just take that political football off the table now. Schumer, Senator Schumer, has said that he wants Gorsuch to get 60 votes. Gorsuch may be able to get 60 votes, but I don't see why we just don't go ahead and set the precedent now, pull it off the table, because we know they're gonna use it as a political football, the next nominee that President Trump may get.
Okay. Bill, you are not alone in expressing that opinion, there have been several other folks that have mentioned that same thing. Let me tell you just perspective from me on this. The, what you call the nuclear option, was done by Harry Reid to be able to change the selection process for cabinet officials, all of those, as I mentioned earlier, they're called those 1,200 people, that require a Senate confirmation, and all of our lower courts, circuit courts and district courts, all are just a straight 51 votes now, instead of 60. There's no cloture vote, that's included, that 60 vote that's typically required in the Senate. The interesting thing about the Supreme Court of the United States, there has never been a Supreme Court Justice ever that has required a filibuster 60 votes, never. Now, some of them have only been approved with, for instance, 52, like Clarence Thomas, arguably in modern day, one of the most controversial and heated processes. Clarence Thomas went on to the Supreme Court of the United States with 52 votes, that's what he was voted into. But there was a very wide perspective, that there would not be a demand for a 60-vote requirement, it was an up or down vote. No justice in the history of the country has ever had a 60-vote requirement ever put on them by Republicans or Democrats. So, this is a very historic conversation, that Chuck Schumer has had to say, "He's gonna suddenly make it a 60-vote requirement." Now, saying all that, I think that Neil Gorsuch will have the 60 votes, and I think if at all possible, we need to walk through this, and to be able to get to an up or down vote at the end of it. We have said multiple times, that at the end of the day, we will put in the next Supreme Court Justice. It is time to do that. We'll work through the nomination process. Right now, Neil Gorsuch is meeting with every single senator and having protracted private conversations. I met with him actually yesterday, for about 45 minutes in my office. When we met, I was the 51st senator that he had met with, that means he had 49 more to go. He will meet with every single senator face-to-face. At the end of that, then he will do hearings with the Justice Committee, and they will go through about probably two or three days of hearings, and then after that, we'll have the vote. We'll see what happens by that time. But I would tell you, he's been very well-supported here, he has been a very well-recognized judge. He is tenacious about protecting separation of powers, that the president does what the president's supposed to do, and not the legislative branch, the judicial branch. Same thing with the legislature, but he's also mentioned it very clearly on judges. The judges are not legislators, and they're not the executive branch. They get to call balls and strikes on constitutional issues, and that's all they do. And so, that was, it was a very, very helpful conversation I had with him. We'll see where this plays out in the next month and a half, but I would allow this to be able to play out, but at the end of the day, we will put in a Supreme Court nominee. So, Bill, thanks very much for your call. Tracy, I'm gonna go to you next. Tracy, are you there?
Yes, hello.
Hey, hey, how are you? Where did I reach you?
I'm here, this is Ponca City, Oklahoma, Sarah, and you're on the speakerphone. I'm here, Tracy Davis McLeod, and just so you'll know, I'm 63. My mother, Ginger Davis, is here with me, she's 83. We're both raised Okies, we live in Ponca.
Nice.
We're a family of educators, and I proudly participated in the Women's March recently, and I will say that the current administration has inspired me to be more politically active, politically active.
Yeah, welcome to America and being able to have the speak-out for the redress of grievances, that's great.
Yes, no kidding. I will tell you, though, that both my mom and I are very concerned. We are actually fearful that our Constitution and democracy are in danger. So, we really look forward to seeing your committees, both of them, actively investigate this Russian intercession and possible collusion by the administration, if it's there. What I actually was questioning, I was really disappointed in your vote on Betsy DeVos.
Okay.
I called, I've spoken, and I, I'm kind of concerned, not kind of, really concerned, that you guys didn't hold a vote for Merrick Garland. So, I agree, it's past time to have a Supreme Court Justice in there. I feel like he was definitely denied his process. I really would like to know when we can expect you to come home for an in-person town hall?
Okay. All right, so you've got about four issues there all lined up, so let me get a chance to run through those as quick as I can on that. Tracy, I'm glad you got a chance to call, let me run through several. One is absolutely in the Russia issue, we're gonna be able to press through. Our commitment has been, we're gonna go where the facts lie, because at the end of it, we know there's gonna be lots of conversation to say, "Prove it." And so, we're gonna keep going where the facts lie, it's a very bipartisan committee. What's interesting is, your statement at the beginning, saying you're very worried about the Constitution, and you're very worried about this president running over the Constitution. As ironic as it sounds, if I grabbed a random group of conservatives in Oklahoma six years ago, eight years ago, right after President Obama was elected, they would've said the exact same thing. "I'm very worried about the Constitution, I'm very worried about a president running over the Constitution." So, that is a statement I've heard in Oklahoma a lot now, from a lot of folks dealing with Donald Trump, or before, with folks dealing with President Obama. It is the responsibility of the courts, it is the responsibility of Congress to be able to raise the issues, to be able to make sure all three branches stay in their constitutional boundaries, and to be able to do their job. So, that's one issue I wanna be able to raise on that. You mentioned Betsy DeVos. So, the Betsy DeVos vote was a lot of research, a lot of work, and you're right, she's a very non-traditional individual. But she is somebody that we looked at, talked to, got a chance to visit with, was careful in the process on it. I have kind of a strange question for you, that I wanna get a chance to ask you. Well, I'm looking down on it, and I think I may have lost you here, so I may not be able to ask you this question. Let me just ask this as a general question. I've asked a lot of folks, "Do you remember who the last Secretary of Education was?" Just as a general statement, "Do you remember who the last Secretary of Education was?" And I've yet to be able to run into anyone who can tell me the name of the last Secretary of Education. By the way, his name was, Dr. John King was his name. So, for Dr. John King, he was Secretary of Education, but most people don't know that, because the work of the Department of Education is very behind the scenes. So, Betsy DeVos, our expectation of her is that she will follow the law, that she'll implement what is in the law, that she won't go beyond the law, but she will actually implement all of the law. And we have great expectation that she'll not only honor public school teachers in the public schools, which is 90% of the students in the United States, but if other schools and states choose to be able to do other things, like our state has a lot of charter schools, a lot of other states, Louisiana has a lot of charter schools. If states want to be able to experiment with that, they can, and will not face opposition from the federal government. But the federal government shouldn't tell our state what to do on that, that's up to the state to be able to do it. You asked about Merrick Garland as well. Merrick Garland, I know, we had a lot of conversations on this last year, on different town hall meetings and different times to be able to talk. Merrick Garland had the same standard, has been applied to other Supreme Court Justices in the final year of a presidential year. We affectionately called it the Chuck Schumer Rule, or the Joe Biden Rule. Joe Biden, when he was the Chairman of the Judiciary Committee for the Senate, often spoke in the last year of President Bush's time period, to say, "If there is an opening on the Supreme Court, we will not fill that opening in your final year. We will fulfill what we have always done, there's not an opening." Chuck Schumer, actually, 18 months before the president's term ended, under a Republican president, stood up and said, "We're too close to an election. If there's an opening in the Supreme Court, we will not allow anyone to be able to work through the process." This is not new, I know it seems stunning when everybody sees it and walks through it, but it's not a new rule, and it's not a new standard, it's been one for a very long time. Interestingly enough, a Democrat-led Senate would not allow President LBJ, in his last year, to be able to make changes in the Supreme Court, it actually rolled into the next president. And so, he didn't do that, even with a Democrat-led Senate, so that's just the nature of it. As far as getting a chance to meet with people, I mentioned early on, I am in DC 15, the first 15 weeks of the year, I'm in Washington DC, 14 of those 15. That's just the nature of a very, very busy schedule right now with a lot of the nominations, so that's just the nature of it. And the time that I'm back, I'm trying to connect with as many meetings as we can. I have offices in Tulsa and in Oklahoma City, and I'm meeting with as many people as I possibly can. But I'm rarely back in Oklahoma right now, that's just the season that we're in. That's why I do meetings like this, Telephone Town Hall, that's why we take so many phone calls, and I get a chance to be able to take through those phone calls and read through all those reports every night. That's why we have so many emails that we interact with, and our staff stays very engaged on the issues as well, because we wanna keep the ongoing conversations, people want to know what's hap- People want to know what's happening. So completely understand what you're saying on that, Tracy. And thanks for getting a chance to visit and say hello to your mom there as well. And thanks for getting engaged. That's what America's all about, trying to stay engaged. Let me go next to Laura. I'm afraid we're going to run out of time here. Laura, you're up. Are you there?
Yes, hello. How are you doing this evening?
I'm doing very well, thank you very much. Where did we reach you?
I am another Edmundite.
Nice, okay.
Lots of, I really appreciated the video you put up about Senator Rubio and him talking about how hard it is to get anything done when half the country hates the other half. Around here especially, I'm seeing a lot of finger pointing about how the Democrats are obstructionist when they're doing some of the same things that the Republicans have been doing.
Right.
How do we all steer the country towards the middle and tone down the partisan rhetoric? And would you be willing to vote what your constituents wanted even if it went against the party line?
So, okay, so let me talk through several things on that, Laura. Those are all very, very, very questions. So what I've tried to focus in on is not so much trying to find the middle, but trying to find civility. We as Americans don't all agree on issues. We have very wide opinions. I jokingly say a lot of times on Sunday when my family leaves church, we can't decide where to go for lunch that day among the four of us. So we have differences of opinion and when you get into issues that are political issues, some of them can be very heated. My main focus is, you should be able to have strong debate, clear debate, focused on policy, but not personal. When it shifts into personal attacks, when I've stopped listening and just say, I read this on a blog site, so it must be true, and I hate you and you hate me and everybody's a racist, or lock her up, and things that become very heated and very, very personal, we've crossed a boundary where no one's listening to each other anymore. One of my favorite quotes from a writer named George Will, who's a very frequent writer, he has a saying where he says, "Truth is not responsible for its owner." Meaning, you should be able to listen to people and even people you disagree on some things, you may agree with them on other things. And it's very common for me, when I write letters or when I talk to people on the phone or face to face, and at the end of it, we don't agree, I'll look at them and say, okay, we don't agree on this one. We're done, we can argue this all night, but we're not going to agree on this one. I bet there are other things we do agree on. We'll find some other things in the days ahead that we do agree on and we'll work on those together. This one, we're not going to agree on. When you talk about, will I vote with the constituents no matter what? Here's my responsibility. My responsibility is to be able to represent Oklahoma and to be able to do the best research that I can possibly do. I meet face to face with people, I do extensive research, I do a lot of reading and a lot of background. I have an excellent staff that works for you. That's really some very sharp people, both in Oklahoma and in DC. And we do a lot of research and background work on this. And based on that research, based on meeting people, based on talking the issues through, I try to vote the best way that I see is the right way to be able to vote. The hard part is, I've had people say, will you just kind of take a poll of everybody and just vote whichever way goes first? No, because we're a representative republic. My responsibility is to do the research, do the background, and then to be able to make a decision. And then in times like this, when someone disagrees with a vote, for me to be able to explain it, here's why I'd be able to make the decision. And again, let's work together on some other things to be able to go from there. I did a, one last comment on it. I did a, kind of an open forum meeting with a group of college students at George Washington University here in Washington DC. It was late one night after the day was over. Myself, two other Democrat members of the Senate, and Dana Bash from CNN. And so the four of us were there. And the topic of the conversation with those students, most of them graduate students from George Washington University, was where are we going as a country with civility? How can we have conversation? What happens, how do we govern when everyone wants to do the most caustic, mean tweet that they can possibly do and write the meanest thing they can possibly write online in social media? I don't know whether it's cathartic to them or whether they think that they're going to move people, but I've never looked at my Facebook page, seen someone cuss me out and say something really mean and thought, oh, they're really, I'm going to go their direction. That doesn't win me over and I don't think that wins anyone else over either. So engaging in the arena of ideas and trying to be civil, I think, is one of the key things that we need to model as a Senate and that we need to be able to turn to as a nation, regardless of our positions. We should be able to respect each other. Let me move to this last question. Laura, I appreciate it very much. Let me move to one more, to Susan. Susan, are you there?
Yes, I am.
Yeah, where did we reach you, ma'am?
Tulsa.
In Tulsa, yes, ma'am. What can I do for you?
I was wondering how you think Trump should handle the North Korea setting off missiles. That last one they shot off went to the Sea of Japan and almost hit Japan. What should he do to counteract this?
Well, why don't you just ask an easy question on that one? That's a tough one. Let me explain why. They did shoot off a missile. It was another missile test. Russia has done a lot of missile tests over the last several years. This was one more. So this particular missile test, it didn't almost hit Japan, it actually did go over into the Sea of Japan, but their trajectory was very high and so that it didn't come across as threatening when it actually flew. So here's a key issue that we've got to track. North Korea is a nuclear country. No question about it. They have nuclear weapons. They continue to test nuclear weapons. They continue to threaten South Korea. They continue to destabilize the entire region. They're continuing to develop weapons and they've been very, very clear, they want to develop a missile that will reach the United States or United States territories. Whether it be Guam, whether it be Hawaii, whether it be Alaska, whether it be the rest of the continental United States, that is their plan, is to be able to reach the United States and to be able to challenge us. North Korea is one that we already have intense sanctions on. There are ways to be able to turn that up, but you can never really truly implement true sanctions on North Korea until you also deal with China. Because China is the main one that about 70% of all the goods that come into North Korea come in from China. China is also the main purchaser of things coming out of North Korea. They're the only ones that purchases their products on the whole. So you've got to be able to limit them and you've got to be able to limit them through China. We have to continue to be able to step up a international agreement to be able to continue to isolate North Korea. The more that they are isolated, the more painful it really is for the leadership there. The hard part is, the leadership of North Korea has made life miserable for the citizens of North Korea. Where they starve, where they lack medicine. So you have to be attentive that when you do sanctions, you're not cutting off food and medicine to a country that's already struggling every single day. You're cutting off things like, as strange as it sounds, luxury goods, travel. So you're trying to hit at the leaders that the country is poor, but the leaders are staying wealthy and taking up all the money of the country. So you have to find ways to be able to cut off and make it painful for the leaders and then to be able to also expose the process. And quite frankly, to be able to stand very strong with South Korea. The stronger we stand with our ally in South Korea, the more that it tells North Korea that they need to be attentive on it, that we're not backing off. Those are very difficult issues. It is a very important thing that we handle that correctly because we know how unstable North Korean leadership really is. But that is one that I would hope the administration would handle very well. For Rex Tillerson, who is the new Secretary of State, that'll be one of several major international issues that he will deal with in the days ahead. So, do we have one more?
We can do another one.
Okay. Susan, thanks so much for calling. Let me go to our one last caller on this. I know we're running out of time. We promised everybody we'd be about an hour and it's been about an hour right now. For those folks that are participating, don't hang up, but let me take this one last call. But folks that are online in queue, as there are several that are still in the queue, don't hang up because I'm going to tell you how we can get your question to you and try to get an answer to your question. Our commitment is, if people contact us, we get an answer back to them, whether they call us or email us. We try to get an answer back to people when they ask us a specific question. So glad to be able to do that. So let me go to this one last call. It's Ray. Ray, are you on the line?
Yes, sir.
Hey, Ray, where are you from?
Tulsa.
From Tulsa. Terrific. What can I do for you, sir?
I would just want to know if there was one piece of legislation that you could get passed that would probably help Oklahoma. I realize you represent the whole country, not just Oklahoma.
Sure. But I represent Oklahoma first.
That's correct, I hope. Yeah, what would it be, sir?
Well, that's a tough one because there's a lot of them in the queue. Because when we deal with budget issues, we've got to deal with budget issues, we've got to deal with healthcare issues, obviously that affects every Oklahoman. When we start dealing with, how do we respond to key aspects of reshaping our government, getting it back? So let me give you a couple of thoughts on it. We've got to do tax because that deals with our economic. We've got to do reform and our healthcare because we have so many Oklahomans that cannot afford healthcare anymore and there's a lot of concerns there as we've already heard from other things. I have a bill that I've actually worked on for six years in reforming our government and trying to get a handle on some things, and it's called the Taxpayers' Right to Know. It's a very simple, straightforward bill. I hope we can get it passed in the next couple of weeks. It looks like we're finally right at the door to be able to get it done. It exposes duplication in government. Right now, there are many, many programs that are duplicative in government. We have a very difficult time getting on top of our spending as a nation because these agencies right now can hide their programs. There is no list of all the programs in the federal government. So even agencies can't see what other agencies are doing. So I'm trying to help us reshape the way we do government and be more efficient in our process by getting that list out, getting it clearly available to be able to see. And I think we're going to get that done in the next couple of weeks. But that's just one of many. I hate to be able to narrow it down to one because there are so many issues in national security and debt and healthcare and education. There's a lot of issues that are out there and we'll have to just take it on. So thanks for calling, Ray. I appreciate that very much. My staff is telling me, let's try to squeeze in one more before the time is done. So let me try to squeeze in one last call. But again, those of you on hold, hang on, I'm going to give you instructions on it. So Pamela, are you there?
I am. Thank you for taking my call.
Sure.
I am calling from Stillwater. I'm a veteran intelligence analyst and Russian linguist from the US Army.
Wow.
So I understand the importance of classified materials to maintain national security. And I also believe that I fought for the freedoms of speech to include domestic transparency in our republic.
You bet.
You've mentioned several of the things that, you were talking about this bill that you've got coming up, which I truly appreciate. You have introduced several pieces of legislation concerning oversight and transparency in the government. Most recently, you proposed more oversight of the Judgment Fund and you wanted more transparency in government spending. But you don't seem to support transparency in political contributions or when it comes to oil and gas companies revealing payments to foreign powers. And you haven't demanded transparency regarding the President's tax returns. And you say there's too much oversight when it comes to things like ensuring the safety of water, food and air and the quality of education and delivery of healthcare, which I completely understand that.
Oh, no, no, no. Actually, I haven't said that, so.
Well, I mean, it seems that you would like to pull the agencies that are outside of the state away. And I understand that. But can you correct me if I'm wrong? It shows up that some of the transparency that's important in your oversight appears to benefit legislators and large campaign contributors and not so much the average resident of the state of Oklahoma.
Okay, so help me understand. Give me, you list off several things there, so which one would you think that's true? Because that is not true. I'm a supporter of trying to get transparency. For instance, every campaign donation that's out there is out there online and you can get a chance to see it. In fact, it was kind of interesting, I had some folks have called me and bombarded me and said, Betsy DeVos donated to you and so that's the reason that you voted for Betsy DeVos. And I've said, actually, no one in the DeVos family has ever donated to my campaign and all of that is public information. You can see all of the donors online, for instance, for me. So help me understand just a little bit. You mentioned something about oil and gas companies and such.
The oil and gas companies revealing payments to foreign powers?
Oh, yeah, yeah, okay. Well, that's one absolutely I'm opposed to. And it's not payment to foreign powers, it's leasing and contracting. If you're talking about the bill that we just did a couple of weeks ago, there was a requirement from the Obama administration that any kind of contracting that's done, for instance, on a lease for anybody international to reveal how much that lease was and the details of that lease. Well, that's a private business agreement. That's no different than any other business agreement. It was very unusual to say that that would be applied to oil and gas companies and to no other company would have to be able to reveal their contracting there. So that's a private business contract that has nothing to do with the American government, the American taxpayers are certainly not elected officials on it. We thought that was an arbitrary punishment to oil and gas companies to single them out and to say, you have to reveal all the details of your contracts. If you reveal a contract, I'm sure you've been around this a lot, if you reveal a contract, it hurts you in the next bid and it definitely tells another country that they're going to compete to get some sort of lease agreement with. This is how much they paid last time, so we're going to try to do that even more next time. That hurts business to be able to see that. So I don't want any company, regardless of who they are, to have a disadvantage in contracting.
Okay, and what is your stance on the President's tax returns?
Yeah, that's been a long, ongoing drama. Quite frankly, I don't read any of them when they come out. I've never gone through any of the Presidents that have released their tax returns. I've never gone through any of them. Some people are really interested in that. I tell you, I don't care. He has the financial disclosure that's out there. The one thing that surprised me on it was that he made the statement during the campaign that once the court proceedings and his audit and everything was done, that he would release it out. Now I don't hear him saying that anymore. I have no idea where he's going to go. But again, that's just for me. That's not something I track, nor have I ever tracked or ever talked about with any other Republican or Democrat President as well on it. So let me keep moving because we're past time on it. I appreciate your call, but I would tell you, if there's any way that we can answer questions directly for you, you can always call our office. We'll get you a direct answer. We'll follow up in writing if you've got a question on it. But this is one of those things that we always get, questions from people saying, hey, I read on a blog site or I read on some social media piece or I saw an image of something and tell me if this is fact or fiction or give me the rest of the details.